This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenley Town Council, and we are calling this special town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance. We'll move on to the agenda. Item three, interviews of board and commission applicants. Dana Hopkins is seeking reappointment to the Agriculture Commission. As a regular member, his term would run from November 1st, 2023, to October 31st, 2026. Mr. Hopkins attended one out of two meetings in 2024 and attended five out of seven meetings in 2023. The Ag Commission currently has three alternate member vacancies.
I don't believe he's here tonight. I don't see him here.
So we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 3B. Rodney Galton is seeking reappointment to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. As a regular member, his term would run from May 1st, 2024, to April 30th, 2027. Mr. Galton attended four out of five meetings in 2024 and 11 out of 12 meetings in 2023. Inland Wetlands and Water Course's Commission currently has one alternate member vacancy. Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about your time on Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission and why you're seeking reappointment?
Yeah. So, my time, I mean, I like to give back to the town where I can, and I get, I get a certain satisfaction out of being part of the commission, being Vice Chair of the commission. I am a professional civil engineer, so I believe my expertise brings a lot to the, to the commission itself, and that's really why I'm seeking reappointment.
Thank you. I will open up to council members for comments. I'd like to say thank you for the time you volunteered for our community. On behalf of the council and the town, it's always an honor when we have other citizens who are willing to give their own time, and we know how important everybody's time is.
Jason.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay.
So, so working with Sandy, she's, she's runs, runs a very efficient meeting.
Absolutely. I've learned from the best.
So, I mean, Killenley seems to have quite a bit in the way of, of water, wetlands, and, and...
Yes.
So, is that, can you, seeing your civil, in your experience, does, do we have more than we usually, I mean, how well are our waterways and, and wetlands?
Our wetlands are, appear to be very healthy for the most part. I know some of the, the rivers and stuff probably aren't as clean as they should be, but that's, you know, from previous generations, but, but our wetlands are in very good shape, and we try to do our best to, you know, uphold the regulations that we do have in place and protect the, the resources we have.
Yeah, I grew up just down the road from Primm, so I know five miles. Yeah, five miles is probably not something you want to be hanging around in.
No, not too much.
I, I just have a comment for you. I, beware of the state, they're trying to override inland wetland regulations. So if you can get onto the state site and...
Which, which department is it, D?
It, it's the legislative bodies that are trying to pass these...
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know.
Yeah, what's that organization, is that from 169 Strong?
Yes.
Yeah, there's an organization, 169 Strong, and they follow all this legislation.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good to know. Thank you.
CT 169, yeah.
Yes, I do know that at a federal level, things changed quite a bit last year. So maybe the state is trying to follow suit.
I think it's even worse.
Is it?
Oh, yeah. Trying to bypass inland wetlands and zoning boards.
Oh, okay. I will look into that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Seeing none, again, I want to say thank you, and we will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is 3C. Kevin Thompson is seeking reappointment to the KB Ambulance Board. As a regular member, and his term would run from May 1st, 2024, to April 30th, 2026. Mr. Thompson has attended 15 out of 17 meetings since his original term started in January of 2023, and the KB Ambulance Board does not have any vacancies. Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about your time on the board and why you're seeking reappointment?
Sure. I filled the vacancy last year, so I've only been on for a little more than a year. I think the interesting thing that's happening right now with KB is, a couple years ago, they decided to change the model entirely of the organization, where they went from heavily weighted volunteers to almost no volunteers now. Literally, they really are only taking, like, younger people that are kind of interested in the field and having them be volunteers just to see if they actually want to do it, because maybe they can put them in the pipeline. But that's pretty much changed, changed the entire model. So it does change the financial aspect of the organization. They also weren't doing transports until the beginning of last year, so that's completely changed the model as well. I think this transition period has been good because it's giving, shedding a little more light on the organization itself and then the financial aspects of it. I'm a numbers guy. I've been in financial services for most of my life, so that's right up my alley. I think I'm the only one that generally asks a lot of questions about every meeting about the budget and where we are. So, but it's been really good because it's exposed me to a field that, I mean, I, I'm not a first responder. I've never been exposed to that. I do have family members, but not, not done it myself. Everyone else on the board has or does, so I'm the only one that's on the board right now that's not involved in that business. So, which I think lends a little bit of different perspective to the board. So, I think that's good. It's a good mix. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, I've known Mr. Thompson for quite a long time, and thank you again for donating your time. I've watched Mr. Thompson donate his time to the music department, the rec department. Didn't know you were involved with KB, and it's always nice when people are willing to give back to the town. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Any other comments?
I've, I've also known Kevin for quite a long time. He's, he runs a good meeting too, so it's all, sometimes it's about getting the work done and, and moving on, so...
I, I currently am the Vice Chair, too, of the board, so...
So, on our side, we'd like to see more transparency in your budgeting process. When it comes to, to asks for, for funding from the town, we'd like to see something that's substantiated. Break, break the, break the transport away from the KB ambulance, so we can, you know, get a better feeling for the, what's going on with the budget.
Yeah, and I think the newness of the, the models and with the transport also being relatively new, we are, we're getting there, you know, we're going to get there because from my understanding, when I joined the board last year, prior to 2022, there wasn't a whole lot of even internal transparency to a lot of the numbers. So, we're trying to bring that up to speed, so...
And again, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say thank you, too. This year, when we went through and looked at the, the expenses and all of that, it was much more, there was much more information. It was easier to understand, and I appreciate that. And I think going forward, it's going to get even better, so...
I think one of the biggest changes recently is we do have a new operations manager. He's been phenomenal. A lot of experience in the industry came from LifeStar.
That's Doug, right?
Yep.
Yep.
And, and we hired a, an assistant for the chief.
Good.
So, she's been great because it kind of takes a lot of the stuff off his plate.
Yeah, you can see the difference from last year to this year.
So that's probably why, you're just going to, you're going to see some different things when we, when we're reporting stuff out, because we've got somebody that can actually spend some time doing that now, so...
Yeah, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, Steve's definitely, he's definitely good with managing the manpower. Not so much public speaking, but definitely, he, he manages his, his team well.
Yeah, I think, and I, and he knows his challenges, and then the thing about the financial side of it, the, you know, the more transparency is that when you're trying to run the entire organization and then you're trying to also look at numbers, it gets very difficult to do that day in and day out. So, I think this is really going to help now that we have a better staffing model, too.
All right, and it's glad to hear all that. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Okay. Anything further from the council? Just want to thank you for serving your community, and we will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, if you want to back up to A, Dana was able to arrive, so if, if you want to back up to A, you can.
All right, so we will move back to item 3A. Dana Hopkins seeking reappointment to the Ag Commission, and the term would run from November 1st, 2023, to October 31st, Welcome. Glad you could make it. You want to tell us a little bit about your time on the Ag Commission and why you're seeking reappointment?
I'm just trying to add something to the commission, you know, agriculture-wise. It's kind of tough because there's not much agriculture left in town, so...
Any questions for us?
Nope.
Comments from council?
Pretty simple.
Welcome, and this, he runs Hidden Hollow Farm, the best pork chops I've ever tasted in my life. Anybody look up Hidden Hollow Farm, and I really appreciate not only your service to, to the town, but your service to agriculture and to farming. Very, very much appreciated, Dana. Yep.
Thank you. Any further comments? Just want to say thank you for serving your community.
Thank you.
And we will be voting on your reappointment on next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is item 3D. John Ogden is seeking appointment to the Public Safety Commission. There are currently five regular member vacancies and two alternate member vacancies. The regular term runs for four years from May 1st, 2023, to April 30th of 2027. Welcome, and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking to serve on the public...
Well, the biggest thing is, you know, I just, I've worked on EV, I just have a lot of time, and I thought of getting involved with something in the town, and so I was looking at different, the different groups that you guys had, and I, I noticed that one didn't have any, and I said, well, that's kind of something just to kind of break into it a little, get my feet wet with it, and, you know, because I'm completely new with anything like that. So, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I mean, the other thing, too, is I, sometimes I walk through town, I see different things, and it's like, God, I wish somebody would, you know, address it and stuff, so instead of complaining about it, I'd rather maybe get involved with it.
Glad to hear that. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, the, I mean, the basic thing is, I'm not 100% sure of what actually in details. Like, I went back on some of the other information that I read in the past in the safety committees that you had, and I've seen some of their work, but it didn't quite like what the expectation is. Like, there's no way of, you know, all I know, I seen that you needed commission members, but it didn't give, you know, a safety or any of the other ones. It didn't break it down to kind of what is expected of you, if that makes any sense.
Ms. Gloria, if you could?
Sure. I can share with you the ordinance that formed that committee, and it does break down kind of the, the focus and the details of that committee. It's really a project-based committee, so projects are assigned to it from the town council or the town manager, and they, previously, they had worked on different safety campaigns around the community to bring awareness around certain topics like, you know, school bus safety, trying to make people aware that they should stop at school buses and stuff like that. But it really is kind of a project-based, so it's really a roll-your-sleeves-up kind of commission. Currently, as you saw, there isn't anybody else seated on it, so they're not actively meeting right now. Hopefully, we'll get some more interest in it now.
Right, right.
And we'll get some more members. That would be great, to be able to bring that, to, to kind of bring that focus back.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to...
I, when I, when I was serving on it, they, they had, actually took members from the Public Safety Committee, and they actually, when we built the subcommittee on the law enforcement strategies, we took members from that to help advise on establishing our constabulary. So, I mean, there's a good possibility, you know...
Yeah, that has been a goal for the town council, is to establish next-level, short-term, midterm, and long-term goals for our law enforcement group, and whether, you know, how they task the Public Safety Subcommittee in participating in that. But there could be a, a portion of that involvement, so it'll help, you know, drive kind of that long-term formation or trajectory, if you will, of that division.
Okay.
And I know myself, as well as Tammy, we both served on public safety. I served on it for a while before I came on the council, and it, it was enlightening, and I learned a lot from it. And some of the stuff I learned there helped me transition to becoming council member. So, it's, definitely encourage people to get involved.
Right.
I didn't really have too much of a public safety background by any means.
Me either.
So, if that's the case, don't let that discourage you at all.
Oh, no, no, it's not. I mean, I'm willing to try it. The other issue I would have right now, I don't think it'd be a problem, but I did get put on night shift at EV, so... But I'll hang in there until as long as I can, you know, that's if you guys accept me, you know?
As the town manager mentioned, this is a commission we're looking to fill, and as it was brought up with the, us looking to start establishing the goals on the long-term planning, short-term, and everything with our constabulary, that is something that having a fully seated Public Safety Committee would definitely be a help with.
Okay. Do you have any more questions for us?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Any comments, questions from council?
The only question I have is, is on a commission where we have five, and he's the only one. How can we, we've got to help him...
Well, you need to, people need to be appointed first, and clearly, hopefully, you know, once you get one, hopefully you can get some other ones. Clearly, we're not meeting at the moment, but I would keep them apprised of, you know, as that commission develops and grows. Once we have three people on the commission, we can technically meet, because then it meets a quorum, right?
That makes sense.
So, we have to get to a quorum, so we need two more people, so everybody can go out and recruit. We need Donna Bronwell here to go out and recruit.
So, now, can I ask a question? Now, like, if I, say if I do have some concerns, now I would...
Bring them to me.
Obviously, I'd go to Mary. Now, is that something I'd be, I mean, I'd be, that would be part of my deal, right?
I, I'm gladly...
Or, I mean, is it everything where you guys are pretty much going to give me a direction where you want, what to, what to, what to happen, and...
Well, what I'll do is, you know, pending appointment on this, I can sit down with you and go over what that commission actually does, what your role would be as a commission member.
All right, that'll be...
And kind of help give you that structure as to what that looks like.
Right, because I don't want, like, I'm sitting here saying, oh, you know, it'd be cool...
Yeah, you don't want to make assumptions around things.
And all of a sudden, you know, I'm coming up with all these ideas in my head, and actually, it's not even like that at all.
No, 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 that's fine, and, and, you know...
If that makes any sense.
That's okay, no, that's, but it's, it's being the one, so I, we've got to help it, and it's kind of hard that, I don't want to be left out in, in the court, you know? We've got to do something that he's come forward and...
Yeah, and, you know, I am the staff liaison. I typically staff that position, the commission, and so I usually like to meet with any new commission members anyway to just kind of go through, you know, what the structure is, what the actual...
Okay, that'll work, that'll, that'll actually work.
Focuses are, so, yeah.
And, and, you know, we're, we're always, the town is always open to, you know, if you see something, you say something. I mean, if you see there's road damage, you see, you know, there's, see something funny going on. Yeah.
Right, all right. Sounds good.
I got one thing. So, this might be someplace where you could introduce him to Daniel Amarante. I did do the survey, and even though I only got three back, one of them, and maybe two, I'd have to look, I can forward the names, said they were interested in being on a committee. Yeah, so, and I'm interested, so that might be, you know him better than I do. Yep.
Anything further for us?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Anything from council? All right, I want to thank you for coming forward and looking to serve the community. We will be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name. Jared Pishi is seeking appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There is currently one regular member vacancy and three alternate vacancies. The regular term runs for five years from January 1st, 2020, to January 31st, 2025. Welcome.
Hi.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I've lived in Killenley most of my life. I'd just like to be more involved and get a better understanding of the local government, and it's something I don't mind giving my time to. I like the idea of being on a committee that gives people a second chance to be heard, have their case heard, so that's, that's what drew me specifically to that board. I'm a contractor, builder, so I brush up against zoning issues occasionally. Obviously, it's smaller magnitude, but, you know, I do have some, trying to settle disputes between neighbors and things like that, and keeping in mind individual property rights with, like, what's better for the area, and so, that, that's where my interest was with it.
Okay, all right. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I mean, I, I figured it's something I could probably just kind of learn as I go and show up to meetings, and, you know, just, is it mostly just hearing people's cases and kind of having a quorum, doing a bow-on and stuff? That's what I figured.
Yeah, there's a structure to it. We would actually have our staff liaison to that commission reach out to you.
Okay.
Kind of give you that outline of kind of what they see. You'd be able to look at, you know, even former agendas and minutes and stuff like that, but really, it is when somebody has a decision that occurs with the planning and zoning, and they, you know, feel that there's, they need to have an appeal process.
Sure.
So, they review that for any regulatory missteps and stuff like that, so, yeah.
Any questions, comments from council? I want to say thank you for coming forward and looking to serve your community. It is greatly appreciated, and we will be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on the agenda. Next item up is item four, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Gloria, did we have anything submitted?
None were submitted.
Okay, thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Any comments will have to be pertinent to the items on this evening's agenda because it is a special town council
My name is John LaBelle, 57, Island Road, Dayville. Items on the agenda. So, basically, it's Housing Authority Agricultural Commission or appointments. Is that correct? Well, I wasn't prepared to just limit my comments to that, but what I will say is that people who come forward to serve, I congratulate you. It's, it's nice to see that we do have people in the community that, that come forward to serve. And, no, can't go there. Thank you for your serving the community as well. It's sometimes easy to overlook what you all do, week to week, day to day, and I realize it's full of, it fills any spare time that you might have. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing no more public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. Item five, we have no old business. We move on to item six, 6A, new business, meeting with Agriculture Commission and Staff Liaisons Anne Marie Aubrey and Allison Brady.
I'm not here for you.
I am the chair of the committee.
I'll just set up the sign.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're getting the whole committee show.
Centralize the microphone there.
Welcome. Can you go over what's been going on with the Ag Committee?
If you tap it, it makes feedback noises. Do that one.
All right, so I'm Rick Miller. I'm the Chair of the Ag Committee. This is what my second year, second year doing this. The last year or so for us has been really kind of a learning experience for all the new members. We've had some old members leave that, you know, left, not without giving us great advice and kind of giving us some pointers and how to move forward. The last, last season, we had come up with some, some plans and ideas to do some events this year. We attended most of the Celebrate Killenleys last year, I believe, and, or Second Saturdays in the Celebrate Killenley. We, we wanted a booth presence. We hadn't had that in the past. But we were all kind of finding our way as to what exactly, what the mission of the Ag Committee is and how to work with that mission based on, like Dana was saying, the, the short amount of, the short number of, you know, farms, the farming community has shrunk quite a bit in town. So, we had to get creative. We expanded some of our ideas into home gardening and cultivating mushrooms and, you know, even teetering on the line of horticulture a little bit just to kind of get a little bit more traction, a little bit more interest in the community. This year, we've, we've actually brainstormed some, some other ideas, expanding a little bit further, classes on maybe composting, things, things of that nature, things that you can do in your backyard, not just on a, like, a macro level like, like what Dana runs here. I will say that it's great having Dana be reappointed because, as he said, having that, that different perspective of someone who, who's running a larger operation, he's got more knowledge in his little finger than I think most of us on the committee have in our whole bodies. So, we really appreciate the reappointment, him coming back to us. I think one of my main goals, and, and we've talked a little bit about this at the committee as well, is getting to know some of the other farms that we have here in town and figuring out different ways that we can work with them, and really come back to our core mission, which is evangelizing, you know, the agriculture in town and, and telling people that live here on what great farming products we have, what great vegetables we grow, you know, the meats we produce, the, the eggs we produce, those types of things. So, that's going to be, I think, my focus moving forward over the course of the year. It was difficult for us this past year because we couldn't have quorum during the winter, and the winter is when we want to plan all of our activities for the spring and summer. So, we found ourselves a little bit behind the ball last year and kind of scrambling, figuring out what to do with, with our booths and how to make them more, you know, how to engage folks better and make them more fun and educational. We have a decent grasp on that now, and I think we're going to take another step this year, and hopefully, we can continue our quorums moving into the, the fall and winter season, so next year will be even better. So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, thank you. Being able to be part of the, the group has been really wonderful. One of the things that I really liked is they're, they're looking to possibly create like, like a mapping of what we do have for farming in town, and, and I think that would be a real good way to, for people to get the word out, to know what they have that's, you know, that, that we're producing locally here, and I think that would be, that would be wonderful. So, congrats, and I'm really enjoying the meetings.
Yeah, we do a quarterly newsletter that Allison helps us put together. We try to keep, I know with her, she puts a lot of hard work into, into this newsletter and into things like that, Tony, you know? Every year, we have to re-update and kind of, kind of go around the community and see what we have because things have, things change year over year. So, we do our best to try to update those types of things. I think maybe that's one of the things we might be able to put some of our, our budget into this year is maybe new graphics. We have a small, small budget, but we haven't really known what to do with it. Yeah, we're trying to figure out what to do with it. So, those are one of the things that we can certainly do. But I think in the last year or two, our newsletter subscriptions has grown.
Yep.
Quite a bit. We have committee members writing articles now, just on their expertise, whether personal experiences, growing vegetables in their gardens and whatnot. So, we're adding content. We're trying to be a lot more active on our social media page, and we are always actively recruiting, so we're trying to, we're in a pretty good spot right now, I think, with four, four full-time members, so, yeah.
Have you, because I know you said you were at the Celebrate Killenley and the first, second Saturdays. Northeast Farmers Market, is that any way that, you know, have you ever thought about putting, like, a table? I mean, those are pretty well-attended.
It has come up, yeah. I don't think there's any stipulation, I don't think... I don't think there's any stipulation, I don't think, do we have to pull a permit for, to have a booth at, at the Farmers Market?
I think you'd have to call the Farmers Market, but I don't think that'll be a problem because the person that started that was a prior chairman of the Agricultural Commission. Just say, just tell them you're the new Frank.
Okay, gotcha.
It will be fine.
I was just going to say.
So that idea has, has been discussed in the past at some of our meetings.
I mean, that, I mean, that, I know home, a lot, I have a lot of friends that, you know, have these, you know, they got chickens and they got, you know, this and rhubarb and they're selling honey and.
Sure.
So I, I think, you know, I think a lot of people are finally figuring out that if they, you know, with a little bit of effort on their part, they can actually reduce their food bill and they have better quality food and.
100%.
I mean, we're in a rural area, might as well, might as well put it to use, so.
Sure.
I mean, container gardens work just as well as a big field, so.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the first meetings that I attended as a, as a council member was when Byron Martin was serving on the council with us was like, you know, growing a, a plant in a bucket that produces peppers is agriculture on, on a different level. So that's how we reach.
I live across the street from Byron, yeah.
So.
He actually came over to prune a tree. He goes, I couldn't, I couldn't just let it go.
So that's kind of, that kind of sort of snowballed into the idea of like, well, maybe we're thinking too big right now. Maybe we can come in a little bit and see how we can serve members of the town and then eventually work our way back up to serving, you know, again, that the main mission of the council is to like turn people on to the great food that's produced in, in town.
Ag does have a scheduled upcoming class at the Killenly Public Library that people are able to register for currently.
So this is our second year running this event. We're doing it at the Killenly Community Room. It's during the next, it's June 8th, I believe. It's a Saturday, June 8th, so it's going to be during the Farmers Market. We planned this intentionally. I have a, an acquaintance that owns a farm in Canterbury that cultivates his own mushrooms. He's got a mushroom farm. So he came last year, spoke to some, some, it was a free event. He gave a presentation, taught people how to, how to grow mushrooms in five-gallon buckets and in their gardens, mixed in with their vegetables, and, and it went over pretty well. So we're doing it again, again this year. It's between 10:00 AM and noon. The Farmers Market closes at noon. The idea was have it at 10:00. We can get there an hour early and maybe talk to people in the crowd and see if they wanted to stick around and come in for it. And get some more people, you know, same day. Currently, we have, I think, seven people going, but we just posted the event recently and we've got another half dozen or so interested. I expect that to grow. I think the room can hold, I think, around 50 people, so we should have enough space. But yeah, last year was great and, and we had some good conversation and people walked away with a little bit more knowledge about, about that, so.
I just want to say excellent presentation. And I'm glad you brought up the, the class because I was on the Ag Commission as liaison a while back. And some of the workshops that you guys did were phenomenal. I learned, I've made bone broth for years, but through Amelia, I learned so many different things you can put in. So yeah, it's very valuable. I hope you guys keep up the workshops.
Thank you.
And are you going to be at the second Saturdays?
We plan on being, having a presence at all of them.
Good.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
So I wanted to ask staff because Dana had asked me at, at one point, and we kind of got stalled about the school thing and the, the corn or the grain with the agricultural aspect of the school. Maybe you can remind me because maybe that's something staff can coordinate between the school and you guys to get that kind of ball rolling so that maybe you could get a little bit of the corn or something. There's been an old deal going on with, you know, a school that's not, a farm that's not in town. We've got a farm that's in town. We could have a little sharing with that resources and then you could have some volunteers come. Like, I'd love to see our school agricultural, you know, get, get involved with you guys. Could you remind people of that, Dana?
Well, I've, I've asked her a few times about it. The, the corn maze that the VoAg department puts in every year, Fairview Farm from Woodstock chops the corn off. And he's supposed to donate back to the VoAg for the silage. And from what I understand, every year he claims it's a loss and there's nothing given back to VoAg. I don't know if that's true or not, but to me, something like that probably should go out the bid. It's worth money standing. If not, he should be giving back to the VoAg's. That's my thought on it.
I think we've tried to connect them to this Board of, to the department that oversees that and the Board of Education, clearly. On the town side, we don't oversee that. That is a Board of Education matter, so we try and connect. I know previously with the previous superintendent, I don't think I've ever brought it up with the current superintendent. I can, you know, resurrect that thread with Sue. I know it, we had done that connection with the previous superintendent. But again, I'm not sure where they were with connecting with the actual VoAg, the administrators that administer that program, so I can definitely remake that connection.
To me, my thought on that is, is VoAg should be getting something. If they're not getting something and they're claiming it's a loss, I mean, I don't care if somebody from Lebanon gets the corn. But the VoAg is a dying thing, just like every other agriculture, and it should have more.
Yeah, and I, I vaguely remember some of the information around that. It was like the net, so after expenses like fuel and stuff like that comes off, then whatever is left. And I don't know how much. I, I don't think we ever got, I never saw dollar figures or any history around that. So I only saw the kind of the conversation around what the kind of bones of that agreement was, but I've never actually even seen an, an agreement, agreement. So again, I'm not sure that historical.
A lot of what would come into effect is with that too. Like last year, they chopped it early. But after, you know, it's supposedly November 1st, it can't be chopped. And if it gets frosted before November 1st, it lowers the value of it drastically. But to me, VoAg should be getting something. You know, if he can pay Joe Schmo farmer 50 bucks a ton for corn in the field, VoAg should be getting 50, 50 a ton for it, you know? And it's my theory on it.
I mean, I mean, there's, there was always that, there was that big thing like last year with how much, how expensive feed was getting. I mean, silage is, is, must have, I would think it would, that would have a pretty good price tag on it.
It does. You know, I, I can't remember what they were paying tonnage-wise now off the top of my head, but I know they sell it for $75, $80 a ton chopped, so I want to say they were paying like 50 for it in the field. So, you know, there's 12-ish acres there. There's, you know, good cornland, 20 tons of the acre. That's, that's money that should be going to VoAg.
Yeah, but, and also just the knowledge here. I'd like to get this group talking to our VoAg if, if there's any way I can help, you know, and, and you guys. There's just too much knowledge and, and this is our, one of our local farms, like the, the kids should be involved somehow.
We've got students now with divorce stuff that are in VoAg, but it's, you know, there's only a couple, you know?
We can definitely continue to, to explore that, though. Figure out some different angles and how we can get the kids involved in, you know, with the farms, but also with us, you know, at our events and things like that.
I mean, I know the, when they did their Christmas thing up there, a lot of the Ag students, because they have the SAEs. To me, you know, I think a lot of people don't understand how much product out there is, is agricultural-based. So, I mean, I, I think, I think, I think that's part of, that might even be part of the problem why you only get a couple here and a couple there. Because, I mean, it's, it really is immense. I mean, everything from natural fibers to, to raising animals, so.
Just, I think that, that corn, it should be given money to VoAg. Hopefully, it is, and I'm wrong, but I know people on the inside scoop on the other side of it says every year it's a loss and there's nothing going there. So it's like, you know, that isn't right for the kids.
Any other comments, questions? Do you have anything further for us? I want to thank you for all, all your time. You dedicate to this community and volunteering, and it's great to have the expertise and the knowledge on the commission as well. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on on the agenda, next item up is 6B, meeting with Housing Authority and Staff Liaison, Carol Green. Welcome.
Thanks, Mary. We do, we grow people. Well. As far as what we've been doing, I imagine that's one of the questions.
How's that elevator?
That elevator is still sitting there waiting for Otis to attend to it. And I was told probably July or August. Mary Brahm, who is the liaison from the town staff to our little place over there, she has contacted Otis. She contacted them last Friday. I called and I asked her what was going on, if she had heard anything. And she has put a call into the woman that has done the presentation, has given us all of the, the cost factors. And she has never gone back with her. So we have been mandated to do additional work other than just say, come on in, fix the elevator. We have had to put in a sump pump in the pit of the elevator because you know how close to the river we are. And we are at the lowest point. Back a number of years ago, when we did some expansions at Maple Quartz, we were forbidden to touch two of the buildings because they were in the 100-year flood plan. Whereas Maple Quartz 2 is sitting down, they would be underwater before that those two buildings were wet. So we put the sump pump in. In addition, because of the computerization of this elevator, we had to provide a certain temperature. So we've had to put in a mini-split. And fortunately, the council had voted to give us additional money over and above the estimated cost or the, the quote for the elevator. So the mini-split is a little over 7,000 to have that installed. The sump pump, by the time they got down into the pit, had to pour concrete, had to have a, an area that they went down deeper to put it in. That was $9,000. I have just had to have another sprinkler head put into the mechanical room because the ceiling had to be removed in that little room. Because ceilings are flammable. So therefore, that had to come down. And when it came down, a beam was exposed, which now the sprinkler had, if it were to have to be activated, it would have been spraying into that beam. So that had to be dropped and another one had to be installed. That was done by another contractor that we use, and that's 2,000, 2,100 dollars. So it just doesn't stop. Lights had to be putting, put in, in the pit, different types of lights that we had. Upon completion of our work, which I would say right now, the only thing we're waiting for is like the sump, sump pump. It has to be connected to our alarm system in the event that something happened there. Plus, the elevator itself, we have always had a phone in it, but this is going to change. So now we're waiting for FASD out of Willimantic there. They'll be coming in, I believe, in about a week and a half or two, and they will complete the connections to the alarm panels. So after that is done, they had estimated the end of July, August for the elevator. So that, I believe, is probably, I'm hoping it's accurate. I know you gave them, what, $48,000 about?
Yeah, we had to do a deposit.
Yeah.
On it in order for the, for it to be ordered, in order to be able to get into that queue and, and hold the pricing.
And you know, the way things are now, trying to get parts for anything, I mean, I'm just, I'm very fearful that that might be an issue. And our other situation with that, of course, is we have three wheelchair residents, and so we're relocating. We have two apartments that we will be able to relocate them, and they've agreed that it would be a permanent relocation. The other one, we offered and they've refused. They want to stay up on the top floor. So that's kind of a recap on the elevator. In addition, the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, which I think probably you're familiar with, that was during the time when DECD was our financing part of the state. And that was the time that CHFA was sold the assets by the standing governor. And so now we report to two different governing agencies. And CHFA has invited us to apply for approximately a four to five million dollar grant to refurbish the Birchwood Terrace project. We had expanded those back in 2000, and it was completed in 2003. That's when I met Mary Brahm. We both came on board at about the same time, she as her, in her position, and I took over as the director at the Housing Authority. And so it's been a long time coming. And the contractor that we had that did the expansion work on those Birchwood Terrace apartments left a lot to be desired. And some of the. The walls have had cracks. We did a vaulted ceiling, so we have some things to take care of. They did the expansion, but they never touched the kitchens or the bathrooms. And so that would be done, new flooring where they joined the expansion. Some of them are kind, the floors like this and others are like this, so there will be work to be done. And David, I don't want to steal the show. You want to talk to him a little?
I was like, you got it.
Well. Before, what I have to say is very simple, and it's about our, the quantity of number of people on our board. We have one, you know, we have basically three, three of us, and that's our quorum. We have a fourth person who is ill and is oftentimes in Boston at the hospital. And so we're on the cusp of every meeting with our, with our quorum. So anybody, have, have you heard from anybody?
I have not, but we always try, you know, we keep the board updated and we've had it updated at all three locations. I will say that we've been getting a lot more inquiries about boards and commissions since we've been posting that in the buildings themselves. So, you know, if I get anybody that's interested in serving on a board or commission, I usually try and point them to the ones that are, you know, borderline quarums or, you know, struggling to meet that. So I'll keep that as a high point.
Well, we've been very fortunate. The other, that we've been able to do it every time, every meeting that we need to have a meeting, we have had, been able to have a meeting. And with surprisingly little conflict, but it's inevitable, so that's our.
We have some programs that are now the beginning of this season. We go into Farmers Market coupons, and I think you're probably all aware that it used to be a coupon. And now they give, oh, these cards, they're dreadful. They have issued like a credit card, but they tell everyone to keep their credit cards for the next year. And so we will reload them. They get $18. It's, you know, we spend hours and hours and hours on that. And it was just so much easier with a little booklet and they had a coupon and they went to the Farmers Market. Also, it's rent is rebate. I imagine some of you have heard of that. And that is where the state of Connecticut does reimburse residents of rental properties based on their income, based on their expenses for, for electricity or utilities. And they get a refund. And so we're starting to work on that. Of course, July 1st, you probably, once in a while, you get people that come in and complain because their rent went up. But I want to assure you that we have not changed the rate, the base rents. It is because in 2023, anyone collecting social security received almost 9% income. And that's how we determine their rent. They are allowed to present us with any out-of-pocket medical expense, including Medicare. And we deduct a portion of that from their gross income. Then we take 30% of that and of course divided by 12. So we're not the bad guys. It's the people that give us the calculation to do it. So when you get a call that their rent went up substantially, you can assure them. So, when you get a call that their rent went up substantially, you can assure them. So, yes.
Just blame the mill rate and tell them to come back to the board.
You were watching last night, were you?
I was there.
Other than that?
We have new hires.
Yes, we do.
Some senior people leave, and some new people come in. And that sounds like, you know, well, a couple of maintenance guys, it should be an easy segue. But the old guys knew the people, knew, I mean, just meshed. They were part of the community. And the new guys haven't gotten there yet.
Hopefully, they will. They're young, they're young. And placing ads for employees is very difficult. It's not difficult to place the ad, it's difficult to get somebody to apply. The first time, we had two applicants. One withdrew. The second ended up being a convicted felon that I couldn't hire. The next time, we had four. And so, out of the four, we have chosen two. And they're young, and one of them is very experienced in flooring, which is a good thing for us because we had to contract it out. But, and the other one has claims to being wonderful at landscaping. And so, we're working on things. I think that's about it. Do you, can you think of anything else?
No.
Oh, no.
Yeah, but you're doing, it's, the place is run, just, you guys, you're doing a wonderful job over here. From what, I don't get any, there's no complaints. Everybody's, maybe, you might get it from the food service.
My eyes are getting this big when you're saying that.
I don't hear anything.
We made, Ed, we made social media, Facebook.
Oh, wow, okay.
Because of our flags. I do want to address that. Do you realize how much wind there was this, late this winter and early spring? And apparently, without being noticed by maintenance or by me, our American flag was tattered. So, we were criticized strongly for that. But we have had volunteers that wanted to help us with the flags. And the flags were changed that day because we had them in inventory. So, we did change the flag. So, I apologize.
But classically, they went to face social media without talking to you.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How's your waiting list?
Two hundred and ten. And that's for the cottages. And on the congregate, there's about a hundred and forty. But, you know, Tammy, if we went around and looked at Westfield, Salem Village, probably, we all have the same people. So, you know, it's just who gets called first. I always seems to be the longest. And so, many times, by the time I get to someone, that they have already been received by someone else. And I go by the list. Whereas, I notice so many times, when you get to someone that, oh, this is going to be a good rent. "Oh, I'm sorry, I, I went to Westfield Village, or I went to Salem Village about a year ago." And I think, "Okay, how did you get that?" But that happens.
I just want to say on a personal note, thank you for all that you do. My mom is ending her second week.
Thanks, Patty.
She's all moved in finally, and she's very happy.
Oh, I'm happy that she is.
And she definitely had too much stuff.
She's a sweetheart.
They always have too much stuff.
But yeah, she settled right in. She loves it.
It's tough to downsize.
It's a really nice community. I'm very happy she's there.
Those apartments, I would do, when I was doing home visits, they, they, they can stack some stuff in there.
We know when they move.
I have a lot more in my attic right now than I had two weeks ago.
I can imagine, I can imagine. Well, you're lucky because many of them are renting storage areas.
Oh, she has that too.
She does.
Might need it someday.
Yeah. So, do you have any questions of us?
Carol does a wonderful job. She works very hard. But I was thinking for one of your commission members, what about that lady that attends a lot of those meetings?
Well, the only thing is, it would be another resident. And the resident commissioner is the one that's been ill. And so, we really can't have two.
Oh, you can't have two?
No, no.
The current one would have to resign formally.
Okay.
Yeah, because that was my thought too. Because Mr. Moran had spoken to me about two weeks ago. He was considering resigning. He's going to try to stay on a little longer.
I think she would, she would be good.
Yeah, I think she would be.
She knows all of the people, and she's very involved.
Yeah, we, we discussed it. And there's no question, she would bring us any issue that came across the board.
And I want, I mean, seeing with Ron Bocazia, I want to thank Dave Smith. He's a great chairman. And the committee that we have now, Ulla, is our liaison from the council. And she can attest, Ed used to be. But Brian Tavilla and Pat Daly and David, they do a great job. They're very, very, they're wonderful to work with. They're interested. They're educated in the way we would like to have things run. I tend to be strict a lot of times. And he kind of tells me, you know, "They don't like you." They're afraid of you. So, but sometimes fear is a good thing.
Yep.
So, if you have any questions, here we are.
What about the food service? I know that's better.
Well, we have renewed the contract with them. There was a terrible mistake made on the first years. I worked with a woman from the food service Witsens. And she was convinced that the food cost that she had presented was adequate, more than adequate because of their buying power. It was probably one fifteenth or one-twentieth of what the other contractor that we were replacing had submitted. And so, of course, when we got into the budget, we were, they were going over. And they were going over. And I called their attention to it. And so, this year's proposal, and quote, "is much higher that way." But it has to be because now, they will be working with an adequate amount of money to be able to have the type of meal and service that we need. We, I maintain to her, this is their main meal of the day. It isn't a school lunch. And that's what we were getting. So, hopefully, it's, it's better, it's better.
Patty, your mother's in the congregate housing?
She's in one of the cottages. She's in twenty. Yep, she's very happy. On the CHFA, that grant, what's the timing on that? When will you know, or when do you have to submit?
I, excuse me, allergies, I guess. We put out an RFP for a consultant. And that was posted on the DAS website. Mary Brahm has always been the person with the town that has been able to administer small cities grants. And I had mentioned to CHFA at the time before we did that, that she had done this. Well, they were concerned as to money. Was she being reimbursed, or was the town being reimbursed? And it was quite a while ago. So, we didn't have very many figures. So, that was their recommendation that we put it out there. We did get three. And the board voted to accept the one from the town. So, Mary will be, will be our consultant. And, you know, we were, we're very happy with the work she's done for us in the past. And she's familiar with the property. She knows the history. And that makes a big difference. And I, I realized that the other quotes that came in, they were higher priced in some areas. But they touched upon areas that we didn't need that service. And that was pointed out to me after we had already appointed, or they had appointed Mary. I accepted hers. And the, when you start knocking out some of those prices that they were indicating, it made a big difference, but it still was not to the amount that Mary had submitted. So, it was to our benefit.
I think our thinking was the comfort level. We know the person, you know, the, what was, somebody was from down New Haven.
Oh, Stratford. Stratford, and the other one was from New London. And the one from New London had some fantastic prices.
Yeah, and we submit, we base it on, you know, we know what our rates are. We know, we know Mary has done enough administration of small cities grant programs for the housing authorities. So, she knows the time that she's going to need to put into it. And we basically do it on a reimbursement basis. We're not looking at, you know, making a profit off the housing authority or off the project. So, we submit it based on, you know, our actual experience and what we have done for time in administering that type of project going forward. So, the town recoups the expense, if you will, on the administration of that. And that's really it. And that's what we're looking for. Because the more money that can go into the actual rehabilitation is really the goal.
And personally, I've had a lot of interaction over the years with our town employees. And, and they're, they're very conscientious, and they're very dedicated to their work. So, I've had a few conversations with Mary. So, she's very smart. She, she knows her stuff.
She does, she does, she does very well.
She does not have the rose-colored glasses on. They're a little jaded, but they still see quite well.
Oh, yeah, she'll tell you exactly where you stand.
Yeah.
How old is Birchwood Terrace?
It was built in nineteen eighty-two. So, it has some years on it. The other two, the first complex, Maple Courts, was seventy-two. And the back section was seventy-six. And then Birchwood was eighty-two. Ninety-three.
And that Birchwood project would be done in phases because you would do, what, eight units at a time? And then move, it's a whole bunch of moving and relocating. Each unit is approximately about a month to six-week timeframe for the rehabilitation. So, it's a lot of coordination effort, and also recognizing the population that you're, that you have as to where they can get relocated to. So, Mary's already kind of started to cook through those ideas and understanding the timeline of when, you know, timing of when construction may potentially occur. Because they, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done, and the grant would have to still be received. So, understanding the timing of the grant process as well as design phase and all that kind of stuff. So, trying to kind of cook all that into the process. But it's, it's actually, it's a fairly, it's a fairly complex renovation. It's not just like, "Oh, we're renovating Birchwood." You know, there's forty units in there, and you have to, you know, you're doing, you're doing eight units at a time. So, this is five separate moves of a group of eight people every single time. Right? So, Mary's done enough moves with these guys, but.
We did this.
But it is complex. And that's why it's not, you know, it's not just, it sounds simplistic with, you know, we're going to renovate, you know, kitchens and bathrooms and flooring in forty units. But they're forty occupied units, and we're going to do it in phases of eight at a time. And you got to move them all out. And, and it's six weeks that they're displaced roughly in each one.
If we're lucky.
Hopefully, we're going with a hopeful smile right now. Eight weeks, you know, six, six weeks. And so, right, what do you, what do you do with, you know, how does that all work? You know, and it's not like, you know, they have a bunch of, you know, empty units that they're just going to sit on and hold for, for that potential process. So, you know.
We did that, we did hold them up.
I know, but there's, that's, that's a struggle, given the waitlist that you have too. You know, there's a balance to be had here. So, that, those are all conversations that we're trying to kind of talk through and think about in advance.
I hope so. I certainly hope so. I know there'll be a lot of angry people. And they probably are not aware. Maybe tonight they are.
They'll be aware when you start talking about when they have to move. That's when all of us start in, it'll be.
So.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Is there any, like, we're using the opera money for the elevator, which, I mean, you guys need that. I mean, is there any other major, something similar that?
Well.
I don't know, I'm just, you know, if we can help, how can we, if we, if there's some funding or something, I don't know, you probably already talked to Mary about it, but I figured.
No, I haven't.
I don't think we want to bring on another project at this time.
Well.
No?
At the meeting, I'm going to tell you about one.
Hold on to your hats.
I know my role.
After thirty-some years, we have a situation on the first level that carpeting is bubbling up. And we're looking at over a thousand yards of carpeting to try to eliminate any type of a fall situation or tripping.
You just hired a guy with flooring experience.
I know, but he doesn't do rugs. So, that's probably going to be around seven thousand dollars. But other than that, Ed, we're trying to maintain. The congregate, of course, is getting older. It's thirty-some years old. And there's some refurbishing as far as, not to the extent of construction-wise, but painting, papering, carpeting, flooring. That's what's, right now, that's what's hurting us in the congregate especially because they put in carpeting throughout. And after thirty years, we've been replacing, replacing, replacing. And at first, when they first did one, the former director had liked VCT tile. But it's so institutional. And now, we're looking at trying to do some planking and what have you. And it gets very pricey. So, that's where we are now. And we're doing the same out in the cottages, trying to appeal with different types of flooring and what have you. So, it's an expense. But we had already talked to Mary and Jason previously and to the subcommittee, the finance subcommittee, about the parking lots and the drives. They're in tough shape. And that's going to be major, major at Maple Courts, especially in Maple Courts Two. Whereas Birchwood, when they did the renovations before, the parking lots and additional parking spaces, we had that done. So, it's a little better off, but not much more. So, I don't want to be greedy.
We did have.
That's a gem that we have. You're doing a really good job. And I mean, we got to, I don't know where, if there's funding somehow, that somehow we can find additional grant money in the sky, whatever.
I think. I know that people in the community are thinking, excuse me, David, help me. They think, yeah. They seem to think that we are operating on tax dollars. Because how many people have you had come here?
I know.
You know, they do. We do not. We operate on what we take in for rents. That's it, that's it. The congregate is a little different because the state subsidizes us. We have a base rent or a maximum rent. And the thirty percent factor comes into that for the people. And whatever they pay, and if it's not the maximum rent that we have, the state will reimburse us for that difference. So, that's a little different. But the cottages, uh-uh. Every dime that we take in, we have to live on. And we don't get anything additional. So, it's very difficult to build reserves just simply because we have a lot of low-income people. And that's what it was built for. People who are retiring, who are living on social security. I find now that within the last year or so, I was able to put aside more for reserves because of the increase in the social security. And now, younger people that are retiring have pensions. So, you're looking at some higher rents. But for a long time, I mean, I still have probably, I want to say twenty, twenty to twenty-five percent of the people on my waiting list are less than a thousand dollars a month. Many of them are nine hundred and some dollars. So, when you take thirty percent of that, and we're supplying the heat at Maple Courts, it's, it's not a lot of money coming in. So, I mean, when people say, "Well, this looks a little shabby," you know, we're doing the best we can on what we have. But it's a good place for people. It's a good place for them. And then you have the others that have income that provides us with not market rate, because now when you get out there to rent a one-bedroom, what are you looking at, twelve, fourteen hundred dollars? And that doesn't increa- include any utilities. So, I mean, we're still, you know, we're still a bargain. It's crazy, it's crazy. Yeah. And our congregate, our maximum rent now will be roughly sixteen hundred. And that includes a housekeeper, twenty-four-hour security, uh, meal every day, a full meal, and some activities that we provide the cost for, so, yeah, yeah.
Well, we appreciate the, uh, financial support, but the moral support is also, well, I, I was talking to, well, to my wife and I today, and I was saying, I don't remember where we've had a better relationship with the town council since I've been involved. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I've been involved for a long time, and I can assure you, we never did, we never did. And I thank Mary for a lot, thank Mary for a lot of that, too, and all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
It kind of goes along with, the older we get, then, you know, it doesn't seem that far away anymore. Maybe we should get on that list.
I'm waiting for them to show me the door. I keep saying I'll be over there with my walker pretty soon, you know, but.
Well, it really, it really is a dilemma, I, you know, low and moderate income housing.
I thought I was a dilemma.
In the, what you were talking about yesterday, the uneven appraisals. Okay, and I'll use myself. I have, I live on Reynolds Street, I have a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath, quarter-acre, fenced-in backyard, a pool. I can't move because I don't know where I could go to replace that. But that house is really, would be great for a family with two kids. So I'm choking up that movement because I have no idea what to do. And I'll blame the state of Massachusetts on this one, because my son owns a house with ten acres in Paxton, Mass, who will not let him put on a auxiliary housing unit by zoning.
With ten, ten acres?
With ten acres. And you can't see his house from the road. So.
No, they're not allowing a secondary dwelling.
Well, I mean, maybe if I lived over his garage, I don't know, we, but we wanted a separate little.
You don't want to live in the basement?
Well, actually, has done his basement over, that might actually be what we're going to do.
I've got one of those.
But it is very challenging when, you know, we, killingly, we allow secondary dwelling units. We have, you know, I know some friends and even coworkers that they have, uh, built onto their homes to make a secondary dwelling unit for their, um, parents. But there are lots of commu- there are plenty of communities out there that, even with very large acreages, they're prohibitive to that type of, and it's really community living. You know, I mean, having your family right there is, uh.
You should see available, like, um, there's, um, uh, homes that they keep on the trailers.
Oh, yeah.
So when you consider like a, a trailer.
They might, my wife won't.
I'm not talking about the beam trailers, they actually are homes, but because they leave them on the trailer, it, they call it like a, a mobile, not even like a trailer, like a mobile home, like you could.
Oh, they call those tiny houses?
They do.
You want to see my eighty-year-old wife climbing up to the second-level bedroom? Little loft bedroom, nah, I.
I've been saying this for many years, I, I think, when you look at the, around the world where there's the most centarians, the blue areas, the one thing they have in common, a lot of it's diet, but a lot of it is they live with three generations under one roof.
Sure.
And I think where we are here, we're lost. I think naturally, that's where we're going to get this stuff. You build generational wealth very quickly by doing that. We're a young country, but I think we'll get it, we'll get there.
Yeah, well, anyways, that's my point though, is that there's some choking point there on where existing housing units should be back in the market so that you, and to, to address that, two thousand dollars a month for a three-bedroom apartment, or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a nearly two-century-old house on Reynolds Street. I mean, ridic- ridiculous. But at any rate, that's my little editorial from the Housing Authority. Not that you can do anything about it. Must be something about this seat.
I think so.
Yeah.
I'll call you a chatty Cathy.
Anything further from the council? You have anything further for us?
No, sir.
All right, want to thank you for coming forward, and, uh, thank you for all the time that you dedicate towards this community and everything you do.
Thanks so much, Jason.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, executive session, we have nothing this evening, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by Mr. Grandelsky, second by Ms. Barclay. Discussion, all who's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned.